It's called meeting to order, special meeting of the Board of Trustees, Wednesday, April 26, 2023. It is 12 noon. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Michael Ridley.
Here.
Jay Reesman, here. Velazovic, Bobby Velazovic, here.
Here.
And Janet Vance?
Here.
Here. And Bob Kramer is not here.
Okay, approval of agenda. We have to, we cannot change it because we.
This one want to move it?
Next motion to approve.
Okay, there's support. I'll support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comment on agenda items. Public comment is closed. Motion to post opening for administrative assistant. If I start stumbling, I'm not going in the right order. Somebody let me know.
I make that motion to post.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Part of the hiring policy, do we need to take care of the remainder of the steps for that?
That will be.
We post for two weeks, I think.
Yeah, how about we put that on the, we have to have that, the hiring committee?
Yeah, how are you handling the applications when they?
Do you want to handle it at the mayor meeting? Put that on the agenda? Or do you want to do it right now?
I would think you'd do it right now.
Do it right now. We made the motion, Janet made the motion.
We voted to pass the posting.
The posting.
Okay, and the hiring committee would be. I will not be on that committee and Bobby will not either, will you?
So the hiring committee will be myself and Janet Vance.
Yeah, I accept that posting.
I'll recommend that.
Okay.
But I want to know who made the motion. Was Vance move to for the administrative assistant?
Yep.
Yes.
Did I second that? Did I support that or was that the agenda?
Jay.
Jay did.
All right. And have we voted on that? We have voted to accept the administrative?
To post it.
To post it, yes.
Right, okay.
Do we need a motion to do the hiring committee or just like the volunteer thing?
No, no, it's policy. So you have to have that and you also need to decide if it will come in front of the board or you will make a decision and let the board know.
Right, well, that would be up to you. What do you would think?
I think you need to set a wage.
We have it in the.
The wage is already set, I think, previous position.
The job posting.
Okay, so you're gonna, is it starting at the, Laura had worked here for a year. Well, administrative assistant, so who are you hiring?
I'm, we're posting for administrative assistant.
So that is Laura's, what is?
Whole position.
Okay, and what is Karen's title?
Office assistant.
Office assistant, okay.
So those are all good questions. I just want to make sure we get answers to all the questions.
Right.
So for a hiring committee.
We have Janet and Jay.
Janet and Jay. And for, for a decision, it'll be Janet and Jay.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to go to the board.
And if, you know, if we need to bring it to the board, we'll do that, but what is everybody's preference?
Yeah, there may be some, there may be some issues, like depending on experience or something, we may have to pay for experience. Sometimes that happens and we may start at the bottom and work up. It all depends on what the negotiations are. So we will bring that issue to the board.
So it does require compensation. So yeah, we will bring it to the board. I'll bring it to the board.
Okay, so we're just approving actually the two steps, the committee members and that it will be your decision? And if required by the board, it will go to the board?
It will go to the board.
It will go to the board.
Okay, so there, so there you, there you.
For final.
You are the committee and it goes to the board?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will be part of the minutes.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that? That you will be the committee?
I will make a motion that the committee will be Janet and Jay. The decision will be by Janet and Jay and that Jay will bring the final decision to the board.
Our recommendation.
To decide compensation. We'll bring our recommendation.
To decide the compensation.
Right.
To finalize the compensation.
Yes, we'll bring our recommendation to the board, yeah.
Okay, so there's your motion. Is there support?
I'll support.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Okay, before we go on, we don't, do we need, I know you talked to the lawyer about, do we need to have board permission to post for the supervisor or the treasurer? No, so we can go ahead and get that started.
I sent that email to everybody yesterday from Matt.
Okay, just double checking. All right.
Okay. Okay, posting the opening for the assessing assistant. Motion to post for that opening and.
I, I propose that we post for that opening.
Okay, Jay?
I'll second that, but I, we need some discussion on that before we move forward.
Okay, this is just post for the job opening?
Yeah.
And we have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, if the person that is approved for that job, if they want to not be an employee, they want to be contract instead, we may have to change the status of the assessor as well, according to my information I got from the auditor. Because sometimes when the supervisor is the employee and then their employee is a contract, there's going to raise some questions, maybe. So we may have to look into that, depending on what their requirements. If the person wants to be an actual employee, there'd be no problem because it'd be both consistent. But we may have to look into it, just because there's an inconsistency there, just to see if there's going to be a problem. So just letting everybody know that that might come up. I don't know, but it might.
Okay, all in favor of posting for the assessing assistant job? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, the same situation committee goes to the board? Same thing?
Yes, same process.
I would.
Suggest Doug Kuiper be involved in that decision.
Yep.
So we'll make a separate motion to bring that before the board. Same, just going to interchange names, but.
Committee and then.
Who will be the committee then?
I would suggest Doug be on that committee, maybe with you, Jay, if that'd be all right.
Yeah, that's fine. Doug and Jay.
If he doesn't want to be, I'm sure he would be though.
I'm sure he would be, yeah. And then the decision will be Doug and Jay. And then the final decision and recommendation to the board will be Doug.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Support?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Can we add discussion?
Oh, discussion.
Can we add compensation to that one as well?
Yes.
Compensation?
Yeah, when it comes to recommendations to the board, discussion, yeah.
Committee, okay.
Compensation and final recommendation to the board.
Okay. All in favor? Hi.
Aye.
Thank you, Bobby, good point. Okay, fireworks coordinator. Janet, you've been talking to.
Been talking to everybody.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint a fireworks coordinator, just because I think we need one at this point. Do you want to go into discussion first? You want to do the motion first or what do you want to do?
Just go on the discussion.
Okay.
I know you had a lot of phone calls, pardon me.
Doesn't Robert's Rule state that we have to make the motion first?
Yeah, that's why I made the motion, but I don't have support yet.
Make the motion, you make the motion that we.
To appoint a fireworks coordinator.
Okay.
Are you gonna name one? Shouldn't you make a motion of who it's gonna be?
I would like to volunteer for that position. Okay, I would like to volunteer for that position.
You move to make fireworks coordinator? Does someone want to second it? I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we'll have discussion.
Yeah, I, actually, I would like to volunteer for that position because I've been, well, this is what happened. It was by accident I got involved. Jay got, got an email sent to him for a DNR permit that had been filled out yet. He says, can you call them and find out what's going on and, you know, fill it out and get it back to them. So I called them. They said, well, you have to get a hold of the fireworks coordinator too, you know, the business. I says, okay. So I called them up and I talked to them and they said they'll handle all the permits. But in our discussion while we were talking, I found out that they were very uncomfortable about what happened last year on the barge where it broke away and the safety issue, because safety is number one concern with not only us, but them especially too, because they're putting it on. And so, and I says, well, tell me what your, you know, alternative is. He says, he would prefer to go back to the way we used to do it on land. He says either the pier or the beach park that we used to use or whatever. He didn't know what it was called. It was Columbus Beach.
Columbus Beach.
But he didn't know the name of it. And I says, okay, let me make some phone calls, but if it's that much of a concern to you, I think we should make this happen because we can't hire someone to do something like that and have him uncomfortable with the situation just because we like it or something, you know. So I called up Chief Carpenter and Chief Temple and they were equally disturbed with what happened last year and concerned with the safety. And I says, well, then I don't think the board will have any problem. Let's, let's start in process and let's see if this is able to do that. So Chief Carpenter said he would contact Columbus Beach to see if that was possible. He hasn't got back with me yet, so I'm going to get with him on that. But if that is a no-go, if they don't want it, then it will be on the pier, but it'd be one or the other. But he prefers Columbus Beach. It's a little bit more secure to unload and load and keep other people away from it than what the pier would be. But that's still more manageable than what the barge was, so.
But the, you're saying the pier at the very end where the fishing?
Well, yeah, towards the end. And there's more expenses to that as well.
Well, it's also a problem though for boat traffic because the last time they, they couldn't at the end of the fireworks have boats travel down the river because the barges anyway. And so in any case, if you had a barge, the barge's got to move at least 350 to 400 feet north.
Right.
And so it really needs to be on the Columbus Beach side of the river someplace somehow for boat traffic and for safety.
Well, they would close down, Chief Carpenter said they'd close down the river like a couple hours before and then, you know, as soon as they could open it afterwards. But that whole place, the whole mouth of the river would be closed off like it used to be.
I talked to chief and he's already talked to Mark Melvin and they have okayed using Columbus Beach.
Oh, good, good, because I haven't got back with him yet. So it's going to be on Columbus Beach. That's great.
We talked after the last.
There's less expenses to it as well.
Correct, and it's really, it's labor intensive to put it on the pier.
It is, it is. And it's more dangerous. You might get some yahoos that throw something up towards the fireworks and gets it all messed up or something or, you never know because the boat traffic is still going on while they're setting up. And so, you know, that can become an issue. So he was a lot more comfortable with Columbus Beach. So I'm glad that's a go.
Yeah, I called Travis too and told him we wouldn't be using his barge and he was fine.
I say he's probably really okay with that.
He went out and bought three or four of them, so.
Yeah, so anyway, so we're going to go back to that. And in addition to that, Bob Kramer's been burning up the phone lines and he's getting some more donations. So it might increase the fireworks costs with private donations as well. So it sounds like it's a go. And so we're looking at, you know, having a bang up fireworks time, so.
Yeah, it was a good, what happened last year is that more people got excited and kept throwing money into it. We had more fireworks than could safely fit on those barges.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that was part of the problem. Then it breaks off in the mornings and it was a little scary. So anyway, that's exactly what, what we're going to be doing. So, and that, we just want to make sure it's a no-fail mission. So we're going to try to keep a hold of it and make sure it works. So, because we don't have control of mother nature, you know. So that's part of the problem with having it on.
So we're, the motion was to have a fireworks coordinator volunteer. Do we have a volunteer for this?
Me.
Janet Vance, okay. So that's the motion?
You support?
Discussion's closed. Do we have a vote on that?
Yep, there's no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, waiver of no wake for the boat races. We do that every year. We have an ordinance against no wake in the river. And I don't have any, I've got an old request from 2022, but I didn't see the 23 one. But we know that, you said.
It was in the correspondence of the last, last month.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, it was in correspondence that they just requested it, but we never made a motion to actually do it. When we approved the consent agenda, all we did was approve that was in correspondence. We didn't actually approve their stuff, so.
I would make a motion that we issue a waiver for 2023 no-wake ordinance.
For the boat races.
Boat races.
Yeah, I'll support that. Only more discussion?
Nope.
No discussion, do you vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. DDA resignation. Dave Ruskell has resigned. I need a motion to post for the opening on DDA.
You have to accept his resignation.
Oh, yeah, the DDA, the DDA accepted his resignation. A motion to accept his resignation from the board, I suppose.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to accept his resignation?
I'll make that motion.
Support?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have to, just motion to post the opening.
Okay, and that would have to be a business owner or can it be a resident or do we already have that requirement?
We have that requirement right now.
Oh, so it'd have to be a business property owner?
Well, in the DDA district, doesn't need to be a.
Property owner. It can be a business in there, like if they're renting the property, that would be acceptable. I mean.
I don't think so. Renting, you're a renter in the business DDA? I think you have to be a property owner.
I'd have to read it.
Yeah.
We'll have to find out. Because I would just wonder.
You have to be within the district.
You have to be.
We have the new flower shop and they're renting that from the owner, that property, but they, they have a business in the district. That's why, you know.
I don't recall if we've ever had a renter.
I don't know.
We'd have to read that.
But then again, we've had people who didn't own, like Awakon has a representative there. So, yeah, we have to look that up.
It says, it spells it out.
But, yeah.
Whoever's going to post it.
Do we have bylaws? Do we have bylaws to that?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Well, I'll check on the bylaws for the DDA.
But we need a motion to post the opening.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there support?
Agreed.
I'll support that. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment?
My name is Patrick McGinnis. And for more than 20 years, Jane and I have filmed and photographed scenes in and around Indian River and Tuscoror Township. We have always allowed newspapers, magazines, televisions, and other form of media to use these images for free and most time without requiring credit for the use of these images. While Jane was a trustee on the township board, she helped set up the township website and posted many of our images on that site. We have added to that collection over time. Some of these images have been used by the township for grant proposals, community information, and updates on various projects within Tuscoror Township. The only requirement we placed on the use of our images was that it could not be used to defame, demean, or injure anyone. This is still the only requirement we have on our images. Recently, however, trustee Kramer took one of our images and used it in his newsletter, Trustee Talk. In this letter, he wrote what I considered to be a hit piece on the Tuscoror Township Planning Commission. When this happened, we did the same thing we did the one other time this happened. We sent a cease and desist letter to trustee Kramer and asked him to stop using our image, which he did. His response, in addition to stop using the newsletter, was to send a poorly written protest letter from a real estate attorney and started what I think was his personal attack on me as a park commissioner. We still want to allow all board members to be able to use any image we have loaned to the township and will continue to create new images even on request for projects that will benefit Tuscoror Township. But any violation of our agreement will result in our denying the use of our images. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
Only that I'd like to, oh, come on, only that I'd like to remind the board and the public that this Saturday, the 29th, at the Inland Lakes North School Lot, the Kiwanis is doing a food distribution. This is a half a semi-load of palated food. It's for anybody, anywhere. There's no requirements as far as living in the county, living in the township. There's a very simple form that the food bank asks to be filled out, just asking for name, family size, county of residence. Even if someone were to decline to fill out that form, we would still gladly provide them with food. Distribution starts at 11:00. We're looking for volunteers from 9 till close. Show up, give an hour, stay all day. And we absolutely don't want any food left over. We did have food left over last time. In October, we had a very unusual mix, lots of produce, 50 hunk bags of onions. How many of those can you give away? But our food mix this time is going to obviously be different. We have no control over that. These are posted throughout the community. There is one in your lobby. I have others. If anyone would like to take one and post it anywhere, we really want this to be a blowout. We give away every single thing that shows up. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get, do we have a copy of that?
There's one in the lobby. You can have that.
Yeah, I'll have that one. And we can post it on Tuscoror Talks Back.
I think, I think Janice already did that.
Okay, Jan's already done that. Okay. Chris? Jeff?
Jeff Milner, I'm going to spell it because it was spelled wrong in the meeting minutes last time. M-I-L-N-E-R. And I noticed that there were no, no writings about the public comments in the meeting minutes last month. I don't think that's doing justice to the people that want to get online and read the minutes. So I'd like to know who's responsible for that.
Responsible for the minutes.
How come they weren't put on there?
They tried to talk with you offline and that's what you want to do. It's not required to make those.
No, but I.
Point of order it is, in the policy.
Yeah.
Not board comments, but public comments are.
So I'd like to make sure the public comments section is filled out. Also look through the budget and there's money in there for training. And I'd like to know what we're going to be doing for training for the new people that are filling positions, because it's apparent that there's only a few people that know how to run meetings. And I don't think it's fair to the public to have to pay an attorney to sit here and tell us how to run meetings, even though he's not here today. That's my perception of what's been happening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chris, could you have?
Thank you. My, my name is Chris Brown. I'm the co-owner of the Waterway Inn and president of the Indian River Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Just got back from a week driving through Canada to Alaska. Got back, I had an email, inbox full of emails. So I want to thank Bobby and Mike for the community, sort of the community, for resigning. Especially as I've watched the videos, I really appreciate the questions, Bobby, that you ask. My line of work involves asking hard questions and I understand that that can be difficult, so I appreciate it. And I'm asking that both of you submit your resignation as soon as possible since township can move forward. I could spend hours up here telling the public the details about the failings of our township supervisor, FOIA violations that the state police are currently investigating, numerous communications that haven't been responded to, failures to follow through promptly, acknowledged gossiping that is used as a means for taking action, and the gross use of his time as a public employee spent watching a video of our chamber director being harassed by three goons with the help of a rogue police officer, and not taking action to change policies so it never happens again. The most accriminating evidence that it's time for him to resign is his failure to create the board packets for a previous meeting. He has been doing this job for 10-plus years and either know, either didn't know or didn't seem to care that he should do this. Either way, it's time for him to go so this township can move forward and focus on the positives. I applaud the work of Janet, Bobby, and Jay for your efforts to move the township towards a more effective and efficient governance model. As the president of the Indian River Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, I understand firsthand the difficulties in making change, the folks who are more comfortable with status quo, even if it means continued waste and inefficiencies because they like and are more comfortable with that than with change. Please know that the citizens like myself, who wants what's best for the township with no strings attached, are watching, applaud, and support the efforts you're making to add protocols and policies where they are lacking and making progress. One such example being the township of excellence. To the audience and community members, I challenge you to support progress. And if you can't, when you come to this stand to use your time, please use concrete examples to support your grievances, just like Jeff did. Using coded words like agenda without sharing specific issues as I have above isn't helpful and only distracts moving forward and progressing as a township. Thank you.
Public comment? Okay. Board comment? Jay, Jan?
Yeah.
Jan, go ahead.
I'd like to just talk about a couple of things. I want to redo the fireworks explanation a little bit. The fireworks display this year is going to be moved back on land, as you've heard, and not using the barge as in the previous two years due to safety. And only safety was the reason why we went that way. No other agenda was in there, just safety. Our fireworks would be the best ever, which includes the private donations. The township has committed $15,000 to this effort. And trustee Kramer is over halfway there to collect another $5,000. The fireworks company has already been informed that this may happen. So they're on board with that. Also, after, I'll bring in the contract and have you sign it and get that out by tomorrow, if that's okay for me to be in the office.
Who are you dealing with at Great Lakes? Do you remember the name?
Oh, gosh, it was.
Is it Bruce?
She, the girl in the office was talking to Bruce and then bringing it back because he was in meetings and stuff, but giving me the info back. But yeah, it was with Bruce indirectly and with his secretary, I guess. So anyway, so it's going to be good. It's going to be great. It's a no-fail mission. It's going to be July 2nd with the 5th being the rain date. Hopefully it'll be off on the 2nd. And so make sure everybody knows because we're going to make this fun and it's going to be a community event. Number two, the citizen committee that has been organizing the Indian River Farmers Market is pleased to announce that we have a farmer's market opening June 1st. That's the first Thursday after Memorial Day weekend. The times will be 2:00 in the afternoon to 6:00 PM every Thursday. And it'll be located behind the Northland Brewery up there where Matt's property is. And he's going to take care of leveling and grading and putting gravel in. And it's going to be great. It's just a $10 entry fee for, you know, per week, per vendor. We've got some vendors lined up already. We'll probably start small, but hopefully we'll keep growing. But we're going to start at June 1st. And we feel it's a perfect location because there's plenty of room to grow, plus plenty of room for parking. So, and I'm really happy that we've got this far this quickly. So I'd like to thank Matt Whitner of Northland Brewery, Shiloh, from the Indian River Chamber of Commerce, Mary Reesman, who's Jay's wife, and Nancy Kramer, who's Bob's wife, for getting this done. This is going to be a great asset, I think, to the community. It's going to be fun. And when the DDA does their music, they're going to be doing it at Matt's place as well. So that would start at 6:30 on the night that we have the concert. So it'll be back to back. So I think that'd be great. It'd just get more people involved in the downtown area and having fun. Lastly, I just learned this morning that all three Michigan congressional delegates from northern Michigan have endorsed our newly requested earmark from Congress. That is a $6.5 million earmark that we're asking for, but it can be scaled if necessary. But just to make sure everybody understands, this is unprecedented. Getting one earmark from Congress is a feat for the first sewer project, which we got $3.5 million for. But we've asked for an additional 6.5 for the same project because we're hoping to expand it and also into Phase 3 and to improve the plant capacity with that money, which is desperately needed. So to get a second earmark or even be considered, this is in the consideration stage right now, to even be considered for a second earmark for the same project, it's virtually unheard of. So we are very fortunate that it's moving as far as it's gone already. And just to let you know that Senator Peters is the head of the Appropriations Act, a committee rather. And so it's looking pretty good that we may get something. So we're keeping our fingers crossed. There's no guarantees, but we're happy that it's gone as far as it is. And we're just surprised that we are even being considered because there are thousands of considerations out there for this money being its federal money. So we're real happy that they're looking at Tuscorora. So anyway, that's the end of my board comments. Thank you.
Bobby, you have any?
No, thanks.
Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I think in our last meeting, I mentioned that we did get a refund or we were going to be refunded money for the workman's comp insurance. And so we did receive the check today for $7,800. And thanks to a great amount of teamwork from Janet Vance and Janice Delahay and.
from Janet Vance and Janice Delahay and, and others, myself, that basically go back and create over 200 pages of documentation necessary to cover two years' worth of audits. That was 2020 and 20, you know, 2020 to '21 and 2021 to '22. And we also, because we did that, we, and oh, by the way, that's all on the web, so if you really want to see what the work entails, go visit the web and you'll see that information there. In addition, we were able to avoid another $9,996 because of the fact that we did both years at the same time, and now we're prepared for the audit this coming, coming year, probably in August timeframe. I'd also like to mention that, you know, our grant responses to grant programs are on schedule for the $3.5 million, you know, we're producing all the paperwork necessary